To order today is Wednesday, February 2. It is 7:32 PM. This is City of West Miami Regular City Commission Meeting. If we could all rise with the invocation. This evening, we have Major Pete Delgado leading us in the invocation.
Good evening. Please bow our heads. Lord, we thank you for all the blessings you give us on a daily basis that at times we may take for granted. We ask that you continue to watch over all of us as we begin what already seems like a difficult year as a nation, as our troops prepare to mobilize in yet another overseas theater. Please protect our military servicemen and women during this trying time, as well as our law enforcement officers and firefighters, so that they may return home safely after every shift. Lord, we also ask that you give clarity and guidance to our city leaders and elected officials, so that they continue to make the right decisions when it comes to the wellness of the city and its residents. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Major. And this evening, I'd like to ask our FPNL representatives Ariel Lazo and Armando Fernandez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undercut the individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Rondo Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón has to be excused, and his excuse note is within your packet. Commissioner Candida Blanca, Commissioner Juan Blanis.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for January 19, 2022, regular commission meeting.
Mayor, I don't see any discrepancies, so I make a motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item five, public comments.
Has anyone signed up for public comments?
Not at this moment, Madam Mayor.
Anyone would like to speak and would like to sign up after that? No? Okay, thank you. Next item.
Item six, report of the city manager.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Commission. I have a verbal report, and it's a very brief one, I promise. Just to give you an update on our, on our, some of our city equipment, we have, we had as of this afternoon, four city vehicles in the shop for repairs. Two of them are the buses that are in use for transporting our senior citizens and the children from the school to take them to the after-school care to the park. We are waiting, what appears to be minor repairs is taking a long time. We're waiting for some hoses. Mr. Penn, am I so far so good?
Parts.
Parts, okay. Some parts for repairs, and as you know, there is a terrible shortage of parts and supplies everywhere. So, we have had to rent a van. I'm sure you've seen the van parked in front of the City Hall, and we're making every effort to contact the vendors and please ask them to expedite as much as they can or prioritize our equipment. The other two equipment are the tree trimming truck. That truck is already done. The repairs have been performed, and the city will be picking up the truck in the morning. And we have a chipper in service as well. So, we can't do our routine tree trimming without the chipper, but we hope that we can get the piece of equipment back as soon as possible. However, the truck will be picked up in the morning. So, that leaves three pieces of important equipment being serviced at this time and beyond our control. That is on city vehicles. The next item that I wanted to bring to your attention is, I was, I was approached by Ramiro Inguanso. Ramiro Inguanso is the assistant manager for Val Harbor, Florida. And Ramiro and his children are involved with, with a drive that I think is a very nice, something to give back to the community. It's a shoe drive in honor of National Shoe the World Day. And it basically, he's inviting us to take part on our end and participate in the drive because the, the shoes that are donated will be benefiting Camilo's house. And so, I bring it to your attention before I agree to something like that, but I think it's, it's a very good project. I think it's something worthy and giving back to others that do not have the luxuries that we enjoy in the City of West Miami and in Miami-Dade County. So, if you allow us, we'd like to put up a couple of bins at the recreation center. I think that's a good project for the kids to be involved with, and I think it's an awareness project. And if you agree with it, I can confirm our participation. They're trying to, every year, partner up with a different municipality. This year, they're asking us to partner with them.
Is this shoes donations for children and adults, both?
This is for children and adults.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do this. Do we all agree?
Yes.
Yes, Madam Manager?
They will, they will provide us with marketing and communication materials as well as the bins. And that what they do is, on their end, they have a group of high school students that volunteer the work, and basically, that serves as service hours for their schools. I'm sure we could do the same thing with our young kids here at the, at the recreation center.
We could put the bins at the recreation center, and we can obviously put one here at City Hall. But at the rec center, I think it's wonderful because we have all these leagues that come and participate.
Correct.
There are lots of families that, that come through those doors, so.
And you have people that.
The rec center is a perfect place for it.
Go there after hours.
Correct.
So, I think that's a very good location for it. So, if you don't have any objections, I think it's a, it's a good project to be involved with.
And they will come and they'll deliver the bins, and they'll pick up the bins, so this will not cause any extra labor on our, on our staff.
Exactly. I will get all the details from Ramiro. It may take a drive to wherever these bins are going, and so, I'll get more details from him, but he said they would supply us with everything.
Let Ramiro know we were happy to participate and thank him for asking, for including us.
He is the brother of the late city clerk, Ramiro Guido Inguanso, the clerk at Pinecrest that recently passed away. Very, it was a very sudden death, but they're, they're a very good family, very nice people, so.
Our condolences.
Yep.
Yeah, those brothers, has been in the public life, public servant.
All their life.
For many years. Very decent people, hard worker people. And the guy who was in Pinecrest, he have a problem. He died young.
Guido was very well loved by all his, you know, by all the professional clerks and by everybody at City Hall. I had the, the privilege, because I call it a privilege, to attend his, Anari was there too, his celebration of life mass, and it was something that I've never experienced before. That place, you could hear a pin drop. There were in excess of 500 people at that mass, just absolutely, a wonderful young man who evidently touched the lives of many.
Very good. Madam Manager, do you want to comment on the, the buses and the, our vehicles that are still in repair? And no pun intended, but the squeaky wheel does get the grease, so can we constantly be on top of these vendors and be calling them and reaching out to them so they know?
We have.
So, they don't forget us that.
Yes.
We need these parts as soon as possible.
Just today, I had that conversation with Juan. I also called Mercy. I spoke to the foreman. I saw him as I was coming in, and they're making, the staff is making every effort in public services.
Good.
To stay on top of the status of the vehicles.
Good, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything else for your report?
That's it.
Any questions or comments on the manager's report? Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item seven, report of the city attorney.
There's no report of the city attorney.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next item.
Item eight, report of the city union.
I don't have any report tonight, but as always, I'm here to answer any questions. I do have a few items on the agenda we can discuss at that time.
Wonderful. Thank you. Then you'll be coming back up later.
Madam Mayor, may I suggest that Frank give us a status on Phase One of the potable water, where we're at? I know Juan gave me, you know, a status update, but I think for the benefit of the public, so that we know where we're at with wrapping up Phase One.
But will we be talking about that during, is that on the agenda?
No.
Oh, just a report, okay.
Yes. Current phase.
Please.
Yeah, I mean.
Go right ahead.
Contractor, I believe, is pretty much wrapped up with the easement work. So, we're, you know, we got to finish up now, final punch list, and get all that done. I don't have a schedule yet from him for completing final punch decisions, but typically, you know, it's about a month or so to get through all that stuff, so.
I, I sent you a memo, I think you all, Mr. Penn as well. We'd like to be able to close this project out on March 30 with DEP.
That should be fine.
And I, I had asked you to try to meet that March 1 deadline, so that we can issue payment to the contractor, get that check cashed by the bank, because we have to provide the state with a progress report that includes your report plus the financial data.
Yep.
So.
I think we're, we're right, I think we're right there in that, in that window. That should be fine.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll be calling you back up shortly.
Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item nine, committee reports, report of the mayor.
I have more of a request than a report. If you've all gone to your mailbox lately, you've noticed we have a pin from the Florida League of Cities celebrating their 100-year anniversary. So, in speaking with the manager, I thought it would be a great idea if the City of West Miami presented the Florida League of Cities with a proclamation in celebration of their 100-year anniversary. They do so much for all the municipalities. I thought it'd be a, there you go. And Mr. Blanis has it, Commissioner Blanis has it to share with the audience. So, I was hoping for your support in requesting a resolution for them. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Madam Clerk, if you could work on that resolution for the Florida League of Cities 100-year anniversary?
Proclamation.
Resolution. Resolution, Madam Mayor.
I meant resolution, I'm sorry. I did say proclamation, resolution. And I have resolution written right here, and I said proclamation. Yes, resolution, please.
Somebody from the league send it to me.
Okay.
Yep.
Very well. Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Item 10, unfinished business. Item 10, a follow-up report in reference to FPL replacement of street lights. This item is continued from January 19, 2022, commission meeting.
Thank you. Who's going to take this? Commissioner Blanis? Go right ahead, sir.
First and foremost, I, I'm grateful, I'm thankful, I think we all are, that Mr. Fernandez and Mr. Lazo are, you came at our request, and we are deeply, deeply thankful. I know that you guys are busy and, and, you know, have a lot of things to do, so I'm really, really grateful that you're here. I really, really appreciate it. So, the issue was the, the spectrum. I'm not a light connoisseur, but when I say spectrum, am I referring to the, that white look of the light?
The color temperature.
The color temperature? Okay. So, I've been talking to our residents, and, and a lot of our residents like the light, like the color spectrum, but there's a lot of residents that have the short post that are in the middle of the streets and avenues that are, some of them happen to be right in front of residences. And, you know, it's, the distance is not very far. So, there are some residents that, that fall into this circumstances, this situation, and they're not happy. You know, they, they, they like that old, you know, non-LED, you know, I don't know what, what you call it, but, you know, they were, they were used to that. So, so this, this bright light, you know, they, it's not appealing to them. So, my question to you is, do you have, can you offer us a three, a 3,000K light for those short posts?
Gentlemen, if you would, for the record, your name and address. And I'm sorry, I meant to tell you that when you walked up.
Yes, ma'am. Ariel Lazo, 13385 Southwest 72nd Terrace, Miami, Florida.
Armando Fernandez, 4200 West Flagler.
Thank you.
So, so there's a, there's a, there is a, one of the tall posts on the corner, southwest corner of Silvania and 11th Street that has that 4,000K light. And on that same side of the street, just a little further west, there is a short post there in front of a residence that still has the old non-LED light. That light was not changed. And then if you go a little further, you have another, you know, one of those short posts that has the 4,000K light. So, I was thinking, if, if we can have your assistance and change that light that was not changed, that still has the non-LED light, to a 3,000K light. And then we can all, you know, we can all go there and, and, you know, in the evening and judge for ourselves if this 3,000K light on the short post in front of the residences, the ones that are in the middle of the block, streets and avenues, are more appealing, are more, you know, the, the color temperature is, is a bit softer and more appealing to, to the residents that are not happy with, with this color. And, and if that's the case, then, you know, it wouldn't be all the lights that we would want changed. I personally think that we should leave the, the 4,000K lights on the high posts that are at the intersections. I think that, you know, that definitely, you know, safety concerns and, and different kind of issues. I think that at the intersections, the 4,000K light should remain, but the, the question is, and of course, we would only know until we change the light to see if this, if this would be something that, you know, that would be, you know, solomonic, you know, a balance between that, that 4,000K light and have the, the 3,000K lights in, in the middle of the streets and avenues. What do you think?
Well, Commissioner, I, my understanding is because of the tariff, the way that the Public Service Commission has set up the tariff, I mean, we could, we could put a 3,000KV light there. I mean, it, we would have to charge it to the city's account. I mean, the light hasn't been changed yet, so, you know, we could put a 3,000KV light fixture there.
Okay.
But I mean, if then you decide to change that one because, you know, you didn't like it.
Change all the others.
If you decide to change all the other ones, then obviously, there's a cost associated with that. I believe the cost is 800, about $800.
For those short posts?
For those short posts.
And how many have been changed?
424 is what your email represented to the city?
There's a total of about 424.
Total?
Total.
And they all been changed?
Uh, no. There's still 20 fixtures remaining.
5%.
About 5%. So, the bulk of all the lights have already been changed.
So, okay, so then, you say eight, it's got, you guys are going, so a contractor does its work, right?
Correct.
Right? And, and the cost is 800 to replace it from 4,000 to 3,000 would be $800.
Well, and that includes the cost of the fixture.
Right, yeah.
Right. Because unfortunately, we can't reuse that fixture.
What's the ballpark figure there?
For the 424 lights?
Well, no, minus 20 lights?
Well, 424 is what's been changed. 20 lights remain.
There's a total of 424, so there's 404 fixtures that have been replaced, so about 5%.
That's a lot of money, huh?
Tell you right now.
Okay, so, is there any possibility on having like some kind of agreement to where, I'm not sure if, I'm out of words here.
Commissioner, if I may suggest, and, and again, you know, I, I think I mentioned this before, but in those cases where you might have a homeowner that's not happy with the light, you know, I, I think the more cost-effective approach, you know, as, as a step, as a first step would be.
I'm taking uniformity, I'm taking uniformity into consideration.
Right.
Because if you have, you know, if you have a, let's see here, I have a picture here, which I want to show you. That's, that's a 4,000K light on Silvania and 11th Street, and then if you go a little further west.
I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner, Madam Mayor, that has to be on the record.
It's on the record, huh?
No, no, you're showing something.
Oh, it's a picture.
I understand that, but.
Mr. Attorney, the, the Commissioner did have it sent to us, we all.
Yes, I.
The three of us have a copy of that picture.
At his request, I, I sent it to the mayor, to the mayor and commissioners.
Is that what you meant, sir?
It should be shown to everybody. I mean, not to, only to the commission. That's okay, I mean.
To the public? Okay, well, I'll have, I'll have the Commissioner walk around and show everyone.
Look at the ground. You, you can see the, the, you know, the splendor of the, of the 3,000K. And if you look at the ground here, of course, is that, that old amber. So, and, and, yeah, I, I think that would be, you know, a, a way that we can possibly accommodate our residents, but you have 4,000K here, and then you have a 4,000K here. I mean, if these all are 3,000K, then there would be some uniformity. You look down the block and you see the same spectrum, you know, on, on the ground like that. But if you have a 3,000K here and a 4,000K there, is that?
Well, and that's why I'm, I'm suggesting that maybe for the homeowner that.
Commissioner, before you come, Blanis, would you show the public what you were showing FPNL, just real quick? So, just show them the picture, so they see, so they know what you were. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Armando, go ahead.
No, so, no, Commissioner, what I, I guess what I was suggesting is, I, I would think ultimately, the uniformity would come if you have one, you already have a 4,000K there. If the one that's left in the middle that hasn't been changed will eventually be changed. I mean, if, if the city decides to move forward with completing the project, it would be another 4,000K bulb there. Now, I'm not sure where the homeowner that is, you know, concerned or has lodged a complaint lives, but, but.
There's no complaint per se. It's just, you know, quality of life.
Right.
You know, concern, but it's, it's not a complaint, you know. We're, you know, we're thankful and we're very happy that, you know, Florida Power and Light is providing the service for us.
Oh, I mean.
So, you know, it's going to save us money, and it's good for the environment, and, you know, everybody wins. Now, let me ask you, is there a way to, to block the splendor of, of the, of these short posts towards the residents?
Does a shield work on the short posts?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, because that, you know, that could be something that can be, that can be done, and, and, and you guys will be willing to do that at no cost?
At no cost. Correct.
Okay.
And that's why we suggest that as a, as a, as a half step, because it might be enough to address.
How long do the lights last?
So, LEDs can average up to 10 years.
10 years.
Will you get closer to the mic, please?
Yes. They can average about 10 years.
10 years, yeah. So, yeah. So, I mean, my colleagues, at this juncture here, I, you know.
No, I have, I have a question when you finish.
I'm, I'm kind of, you know, I feel, I feel terrible. I thought that, you know, it would be something that would be less expensive, you know, but if we would have to incur that much, I, I, you know, we just don't have the, the funds to do that.
Well, Commissioner, I appreciate your bringing it up. Commissioner, you had a comment?
No. Commissioner Blanis is talking about some homeowners that the light is too bright for them. And you said you, you may put in a screen, right? So, I have a problem in my house because it's too shiny. I, I ask you all under, request from you to put it in, and then you do it, so the light in my house will be less bright.
Absolutely, Commissioner.
That's, that's, that's the answer they give you, right?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I, I, at this point, I don't think anything else can be done. I think, I think this would be the, the best way to go then.
But I just want to tell you, Commissioner, and I live in 10th Street, and I has been for two months or so when they start to, you know, in the 9th Street at the back of the buildings. And I have many friends there, has been asking. And, and the people in the 10th Street and the 9th Street, they like what they do that they put down, because it's people walking from the buildings, different, nine, 9 o'clock in the morning, 9:00 PM, 10:00 PM, 12:00 o'clock in the night, Uber comes or whatever, they like the lights. So, it's a way that, what you said, if you have people that it's too bright to put a screen in that area, and, and the people who likes the bright light for their thing is their protection to see better. Because these people around my house in 10th and 9th Street by the buildings, they love that light. They, they love it. That's the problem.
There's actually people all over the city that like the light, you know, from one end of the city to the other. But we do have some residents, and, and, you know, even if it's just one, or two, or three, or four, we need to, to help them out.
But I mean, can we, can we solve the problem with the shield, what they said?
Well, I, I think that's the only alternative right now.
Well, but it is an alternative, right?
Unless we win the lottery or something, you know, and that's not.
And that's free, there's no cost to those?
No.
And Commissioner, rest assured, I mean, obviously, we want the city to be happy with the product, and we want, you know, your, your residents to be happy with the product. And that's why, you know, we're, we're willing to, you know, if you give us that location, if it's one, or two, or three, or whatever it is, we, we could put the shield in. And, you know, in my experience, and I, you know, I've had experiences with other cities with shields, and, you know, we've gotten, you know.
What the heck is that?
I'm not sure.
She's talking to the White House.
Oh. What, what's going on?
She has the White House connected. Juan, can you disconnect this?
Here, please. Use your, use your, use your hammer, your.
Yeah, you might be.
The gavel.
See? She's consulting with Mr. Biden. But you told me that. No? I heard. It's okay, it's okay.
Madam Mayor, I thought you were an expert.
I, I, I got it, I got it, I got it. Give me a second.
The Penner. You used to sell those things, right?
I have to, give me a second. You just started like that now. I think I got it. You got it? I think I got it.
Go home and put the microwave and put it high.
So, you know, what, what I was saying was, you know, where we've gotten concerns in other jurisdictions with the lights, and, and we've put the, the shields. It has, you know, in my experiences, addressed, I would say, you know, 80 to 90% of, of the problems.
Okay.
So, that's why I suggest it's a cost-effective way to maybe address any concerns.
At this point, there's really nothing, nothing, nothing else we can do. So, so the city manager will.
We can keep an inventory of all those residents that call or you refer to us?
Right.
With their addresses?
And then they'll let you know, and then.
And we'll be happy to address that for you, Commissioner.
And listen, I really do appreciate you both coming and being here. Really, really appreciate it.
It is our pleasure to be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blanis. Thank you for understanding my residence, I mean, the side, my side.
That's why we're here, you know? I mean, that, you know, I mean, you know, we're, we're their voice, you know, and, and if we don't, you know, at least make the effort, then. know, at least make the effort, then...
Because these people by Silvania, it's a single-family house, but over here, you know, 9th Street, they have the buildings, and they like to have the lights.
Like I say, there's a lot of people that like the lights. As a matter of fact, most people like the lights.
I'm eager to get them in my neighborhood.
Commissioner, we do sit up here and represent all our residents, so I thank you for bringing this forward, again, for clarification, for discussion, and I know FPNO has been here several times, but they did this too, this was a great thing they did for the city, so, you know, I'm very happy they came back to help us with this discussion, and, like I said, we have to represent all of our residents, and I see a hand in the, I see a hand in the audience, yes, sir, did you have something you wanted to say? Could you come to the podium, please, name and address for the record?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My address is here at City Hall, most of the time. The project, can we go forward now and finish it?
That was going to be my next question to our, to the table.
Yeah.
Commissioner Blanis?
There's nothing else we can do. I mean, it's...
All in favor of this project continuing, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Penner, for that question, and the project will proceed. Again, thank you all for being here. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
And again, thank you, thank you.
Our pleasure.
Thank you both for being here, thanks.
We'll be happy to come back anytime you need us.
You may come every...
All right, next commission meeting, we want you...
You may come every two weeks if you wish, you're welcome.
Thank you so much, good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, was it, was it Mr. Gonzalez, was it Gonzalez? If you want to come up and say anything, please do, I know you were here for the lights, I welcome you to the podium if there's anything you wanted to say, and I thank you for being here once again also.
Yeah, thank you.
Name and address for the record, please.
Of course, Herman Gonzalez, 6450 Southwest 18 Terrace. Yeah, no, again, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Commissioner Blanis, for continuing the conversation, and FPL, I know they stepped up, but that's okay. You know, I will tell you guys that when I first came here two months ago, it was a shock, that was the first day I saw the light, and of course, things grow on people. I don't hate the light, so don't, you know, everybody can go to sleep at night and, you know, know that I'm not a crazy person, but yeah...
We never thought that, we never thought that.
No, no, of course, no, I know, but I will call you tomorrow for the shield.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, thank you.
Personally, I appreciate your interest and you came here, but we discuss with neighbors, with you, I mean, and really works, I mean, because now we have submission, so everybody will be happy, I think.
We appreciate the residents' input, whichever way, and we appreciate, because we don't hear from you, we don't know, so...
Of course, of course, yeah.
Thank you for taking an interest.
Yeah, thank you, and I like this, I'll probably be around for...
Come back, we welcome...
Not just for negative input.
First and third Wednesday, first and third Wednesday, come in, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Herman.
We'll be in touch.
No, I didn't turn it off. I'll show you later. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item 10B, follow-up discussion and request for possible action regarding the 2022 Easter Egg Hunt by city manager, continue for January 19, 2022 commission meeting.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the city commission, as stated by the clerk during the reading of the agenda item, you all decided that it would be a good idea to continue this item to see how things were going with the COVID cases. I know there's a new variant out there now that supposedly made it already to Miami-Dade County, and I think it's going to be like this for a long, long time. So, we need to make a decision on whether to have the Easter Egg Hunt this year or not, and again, we need to purchase supplies, and, you know, the eggs and the candy and everything that, the baskets, so we do need some time to plan for this. So, you decide, we will, whatever you decide, we will honor, basically, but we are, you know, we still have time, so we can do this.
Question, can we self-fund this, do we have the money in the budget?
Yes, we do.
So, we don't have to go out to our sponsors, okay.
The Recreation Center...
Yes.
The gentleman wants to speak to me a minute?
Of course, sir. I don't, I think we're okay discussing Easter eggs without you, you didn't hear me.
The Recreation Center account for special events is fun, entertains money to fund the special events for the year. We would hope to, you know, that we can continue to seek partnerships from the private sector, but I think that, you know, people are just trying to make a comeback.
Yeah, now's not the time for that.
So, it's a difficult year. I suspect that after it's all said and done with police, public works, the purchases that we need to make, everything that we need to rent, everything I think we're going to need probably, because things have also increased in price, and we have the, I have the 2019 memo, and we spent like $7,200, so I'm projecting that we will spend about $8,500 if we're going to have the magnitude of the event that we had before COVID.
Okay, I want to hear from the table.
Well, there was one major study done by a very reputable organization, I think it was the Mayo Clinic, or, you know, some outfit, that basically the CDC and the INH and, you know, and the WHO and, you know, HEAT2, and basically, they determined that these shutdowns and these lockdowns did not contribute anything whatsoever to the health and the welfare of anyone. As a matter of fact, it was detrimental, and it's detrimental especially to children.
Yep.
You know, you know, you have some children that are growing up, and they're having, you know, speech impediments, you know, communication skills that they're lacking, you know, because they're being forced to mask up, you know, by not, you know, by these, you know, organizations, you know, that are basically, you know, ruled by bureaucrats and politics. So, and I don't want to sit here and, you know, and say what I think, you know, because then, you know, then I think that I'm a little crazy, but, you know, Nikola Tesla once said that you can be insane and you can think deeply, but you have to be sane to think clearly. And, you know, this whole thing has caused a lot of people to be insane and not think clearly, you know, and they're being guided and misguided, and, you know, and basically, you know, this has instilled a lot of fear, a lot of fear in a lot of people, and this has been a great detrimental detriment to our society and our culture. So, I think that this would be, in a small way, us, you know, helping, especially with children, the children want to go out, they want to have fun, they want to be in the sun, they want to run, they want to sweat, they want to pick up the little eggs and win a prize. So, I think this would be a small way, you know, us, you know, helping our community get back, you know, to normal. So, I propose that, you know, we do the Easter Egg Hunt.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, yes, go ahead, sir.
Waiting for the manager.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Madam Manager.
Sir.
Which was the activity that we have last year, when the 21 and 20, behind the Publix, that the people came in the cars?
A drive-by Easter Egg Hunt.
Yes, that was Easter, right?
Yes, sir.
It was some kind of festivity? Was something, we did something?
Something, yes.
And the children came in the cars and...
And they got their eggs and candy, and, yes.
Now, do we have to, you remember that?
We did that for Halloween, and we did that...
No, it was for this.
And we did that for, yeah.
Right, we did it for both, we did it for both.
But I don't think we should do that again.
Well, I just asking, I remember that was an event about that.
Yeah.
My question, it was for Easter, right?
Yes, sir, one of the activities was for Easter.
What's that?
Yes, Commissioner, go ahead. Get closer to your mic, so we can hear you.
So, what do you mean by that? What are you insinuating?
I insinuate that we do the same thing like last year, the drive-through.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we should do that, I think that we need to have an Easter Egg Hunt, a normal Easter Egg Hunt. Why not? What are you based that on? What's science? You're saying that there's a whole bunch of children that are sick in the hospital? That happens all the time.
With the COVID.
That happens all the time.
But I have a question, please.
I need one at a time, one at a time.
When is the...
If you're fearful, stay home, don't come out.
Commissioner, one at a time.
I'm talking about me and talking about children.
Okay, well...
But the date for this festivity is in April, is in March?
Yes, it's in April, and hopefully, the weather will be better, which will contribute to kids, you know, losing their winter colds or whatever episodes that are happening.
Well, let me tell you, the numbers are coming down.
Yes.
So, we just, and how many days we need to prepare the event?
We need, we need about...
Four weeks?
I think we need about 45 days to order the supplies.
45 days, six weeks.
Yes.
So, maybe we wait until more, the next meeting to take a decision or something like that, because the numbers are coming down, and...
That's cutting it close.
Yes.
Cutting it really close.
And now, we say yes, or we say no?
You know, in this country...
It's a mistake.
In this country far and wide, you have parents that are going to school board meetings, and they're fighting for their children's rights not to wear a mask, and, you know, and they're asking for the choice.
Well, but in that case...
To wear a mask or not, and you know what? The parents here will have the choice to let their children go to the Easter Egg Hunt or not. The fearful parents will probably, probably won't. The ones that want their children to live a normal life and have fun will, and we will provide that for them.
Well, we may apply the school board directions about that, they go to the school board, the schools, the children...
What do you think they're going to say? I mean, the kids are going to school, kids are going to school, you have football games with 80,000 people in a stadium, none of them are wearing masks.
The mask is not mandatory actually in the school, right?
The, well, I can speak for the Archdiocese, is making masks a voluntary, it's an optional, parents have the right to opt in with their children wearing a mask or opt out.
Look, the parents will have a choice, whether letting their children participate or not, we need to give them that choice.
But from now to April, we may see the numbers coming down, and we...
Listen, nothing's going to really change, you know, once, one day they say one thing, one day they say the other, and you know what? There's going to be a new variant, and after that, there's going to be a new variant, and, you know, until, you know, hopefully, some truth comes out, and they'll put an end to all this, but it's not going to go away.
I agree with you that everything is up and down.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Penner, this will be for you. If we do decide to do this, it's going to be at the rec, correct?
No.
Cooper Park, Cooper Park, okay. When we set up the...
Why Cooper Park?
We want to move away from the rec center, because every time we put equipment on top of those courts, it tears them up, so the better situation that we have is at Cooper Park.
Okay.
On the grass.
Especially with rides, because sometimes we rent little rides for the kids.
Oh, okay, well, I was just thinking, because, you know, safety factor, you know, you have 16th Street with a lot of traffic, and, but I guess we'll have our police department there making sure that...
That's correct.
That's right.
But which, and which brings me to my question, when we set up that orange fencing, the fence we put up for the different age groups, will Cooper Park give us enough room so that we can make those, that area larger, so that we don't have the children standing shoulder to shoulder?
Yeah.
So, we can give them a lot of room in their different age group areas?
We got plenty of room behind the gazebo.
Okay.
Juan, maybe we can draw up a little map with staging everything and providing it as a follow-up to the commission, should they decide to move forward with this?
We'll get our engineer to work on that.
Pro bono.
Like, Penner, like, maybe set up the age groups not side by side, like we used with the rec, but maybe, you know, around...
The gazebo.
The area, so that they're not all together, and make the areas larger than we have made them before.
Yes.
Okay.
I think, I think we need to decide today.
I agree, we, I agree.
And I leave you all with this thought, fear is a reaction, courage is a decision.
Thank you, sir. If, okay, so, if we were to do this, what date would we be looking at, Madam Manager?
Mayor, you know that we discussed two possible dates. The first one would be April 9th, which is on a Saturday, the next day would be April, excuse me, I'm looking at the wrong calendar, yes, Saturday, April 9th, and Saturday, April 16th, right, Anetti? We had looked at these dates, it's entirely up to you, Easter Sunday is on the 17th, so the 16th is the day before Easter, and of course, the 9th is a week before the Easter holiday.
And deciding this evening would give staff time to prepare?
We can do it in a heartbeat, I mean, we've done this so many years, it's the ordering of the merchandise that I'm concerned about.
Deciding tonight, would that give you ample time?
Yes.
Because we can't do this without the eggs and the stuff, so...
No, we can, and the little toys that go inside the eggs, and the baskets, and all the prizes, and the bicycles, you know, we have prizes that we usually give out, and so first, second, and third prices, so all these things has to, all these things have to be ordered.
Okay.
And you know that Gadi is very creative, and she'll go, and to try to save 20 cents, she'll shop around and go to different dollar stores, so all of this takes time. So, it can be done if you decide to move forward this evening.
Okay, well...
And if you want to wait, you can wait another meeting, but then we may have an issue with supplies, I mean, we could always purchase the supplies, I would hold off then on ordering candy until the next, until after the next meeting, because we could always use supplies next year if you decide that it's not a good time.
Okay, I agree, we need to make this decision tonight, so I, I feel the only way we're going to be able to do this is take a vote. I'm going to ask, are you in favor of holding this event, Commissioner Blanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
No.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I feel that Commissioner Blanis made up a good point, let's have it and leave it up to the parents to decide if they want to bring their children, they're the ultimate decision-maker for the welfare of their child.
You give them a choice, you know?
So, we give them a choice.
We're doing, we're doing, we're going to do everything that they're doing, you know, elsewhere in this world, where they're becoming tyrants?
No, no, I agree.
And are making people, you know, beholden to what they say, and that's it, and they don't have a choice?
Let's leave it up to the parents.
We need, we need to give people a choice.
Commissioner Blanca, it's not that I don't, I don't understand and agree with what you're saying, there are still children that are getting this virus, so I'm not, I'm not ignoring your comment, I, it's, you're right, you both are right, basically, so this way, if we just, if we have the event, we leave it up to the parents, they know what's best for their child, so they'll either come or not, but let's go ahead and have it.
You know, the Buddhists say that if you're afraid to die, you're already dead.
Okay.
You're dead already.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you both for your, for your very valid input. Let's move on, Madam Manager, so you're...
The date?
Oh, the date, okay, the date.
9th or the 16th?
I like the 16th, if that's okay with everyone?
The day before Easter.
Commissioner?
Yes.
The 16th?
Yeah.
April 16th?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca, I know, I know, I know, I know, okay, but I still want to ask you, okay, April 16th it is.
Okay for me.
Is that okay with you?
What day is?
That's a Saturday, April 16th.
All right.
Okay?
Madam Mayor, I wanted to, I mean, I know that this has nothing to do with the event itself, but we generally close for Good Friday on the 15th, if you will, would allow us to close Good Friday, so we can plan on doing everything before then, and all we got to do is come in Saturday morning and load up the trucks and take everything to the park.
I have no problem with continuing with customary, Mr. Penner, did you have something?
Prefer the 9th.
You prefer the 9th?
The 9th of April?
And you do too, sir, or then? April 9th it is, is that all okay with the table, April 9th as opposed to the 16th?
Why, Juan, you have vacation schedules out back, or...
Vacation, and on top of that, the holiday, getting everybody back in to put things out... And, and getting everybody back in to put things out, it's not the same as...
That makes, that makes sense. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
We had talked about that day and we also talked about the fact that children leave, they go out of town with their parents because they're gonna be off from school.
And I have PD shaking their head that the ninth works better for them, so...
So...
The ninth it is.
So it is.
Okay, April, April ninth it is. Done. Thank you all for your...
I thank my court, my colleagues that had the courage to vote yes for this event.
Okay.
We're back.
And again, I thank you both for your input and, and, and you're both right. So it's, you know, it's not a right or wrong. You're both right. You both had very valid reasons and, and, and I, and I respect both of them. So, um, next item. Madam clerk?
Item eleven under new business agenda items. Item eleven A, this is a public hearing, a second reading of an ordinance of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami, amending those portions of ordinance to eighty-two and ordinance two thousand and three zero one that pertains or refers to fences and hedges within the city of West Miami, regulating and restricting the erection, reconstruction, operation, location, and use of fences, repealing all other ordinances in conflict here with, providing for codification, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. And this public hearing was advertised, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Penna?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, as you know, this was referred back to the zoning board and, uh, they reviewed several, uh, different types of materials that were, would be allowed if these changes go through. And then subsequent to that, it also went back for the height of hedges. And they agreed with Commissioner Blanis, uh, on the increasing of the height in the rear yard to eight feet and in the front yard to five feet. You're looking puzzled.
That, that, that wasn't my, um, not in the front. I didn't want anything erased in the front.
That's what was discussed with them and they were in favor of it.
This is news to me.
Okay, well...
The rear, it was the rear.
Again, again...
It was, I, I was just concerned with...
And they, they, they also participated in discussions.
So they, they decided to, to, they were the ones that decided to maybe, uh, increase the front?
They merely suggested, uh, Mr. Commissioner.
Correct.
They didn't decide anything. It's up to you to decide.
Well, I, I realize that, but they, they, they were the ones that took the initiative to, to discuss...
To review the front also.
To review the front. Uh, to increase it, increase it to, it's four feet now, right?
Right.
And they said five feet?
Correct.
What do you think of that?
I think it's perfect because most, uh, of the, um, permanent wa, uh, fences and walls that we have for the front are five feet. So why not hedges?
I see. Okay, that makes sense.
So hedges in the front would be five feet?
What, what do you think?
Well, I, I see a lot of, no, our, our opinion, I coincide with Mr. Penna's opinion and the board. Five feet in the front is, you know, it, it actually works out for hedges and it works out for fencing, so...
PD, our police department. Because, you know, in the, in, in the rear, you know, i- it's mainly for the resident so they can have privacy. A lot of residents are, 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 are building, constructing pools and, you know, so they, they wanna have their, their privacy. That's why I brought this up. But in the front, you know, if you have hedges in the front that are five feet, then, you know, I don't know, that might impede, you know, our police department to, 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 to view the property and, you know, detect maybe something that is not right. Like a burglary or someone, you know, prowling that they can hide, you know, behind the, the hedge. I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. So Chief?
Good evening, Carlos Javi, the Chief of Police. Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, I don't know what the ordinance says now. Does the ordinance say four feet? If it says four feet, one more foot is not gonna do anything.
Okay.
If you have hedges in front of the house and it's covering your front, the house might look really pretty to whoever the homeowner is, but it's not a wise idea. That's all I can say. I mean, that's a choice, a matter of choice from the homeowner to, to put in front of their house whatever is legal. It's not very smart from a law enforcement standpoint because the patrolmen go by, they hide behind the hedges. We can't see them.
All right, so...
I have a question. When you, when you talk about the front, is where the, the house finished, I mean, the...
The, the front entrance of the house?
The front, the front, and there's nothing in the, in the front yard?
Yes, in the front yard. It is in the front yard. That's, that's, that's what I'm listening to. That's what I'm...
Wait, 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 wait. I understand. I have in my, in my house, hedges about two feet.
Right.
It's from the, from the, from the, where the front of the house finished to the other side of the house. Actually, we don't go forward to the sidewalk. We don't go four feet to the sidewalk. It's only on the side of the house. That's what we call front?
No. This is like an actual fencing off of your front yard.
So how much, how much high is the, the houses in front of the city hall?
The...
Oh, because that, no, no, that is the new fences with the wood, right?
No, we're talking about hedges now, Commissioner, not, not fences, the hedges.
No, I, I'm talking about because the house here in front of the, the city hall...
Thank you, Chief.
Is a fence. It's not hedge. It's, it's a wood fence.
No, it's a CBS fence with, uh, metal, uh...
It's metal, it's metal.
Metal fencing.
But it has the, it has the grasscrete.
Yeah, it's a kinda metal, kinda. And, uh, and does the front of the house on the other, in the ninth street is, is, is the side?
That's also the front. It has two fronts.
That's why they named the front of this, the other side.
Corner lots have two front yards.
So what we're talking now, we have four feet?
In hedges.
In hedges. For fencing, you have five feet, correct, Mr. Penna?
Correct.
Separate the two, separate fences and hedges.
And hedges.
We're talking only about a hedge, nothing to do with a fence, the, the hedge, the people in the front, you know, in the front yard.
I just want to clarify that.
Right, 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 right.
I just want to clarify that. Okay.
Commissioner, you asked for our opinion. First of all, I'm, I'm very grateful that the planning and zoning looked at this like we asked them, took the initiative to even look a little deeper than we asked them to look. So I'm, I'm very grateful, um, that they spent their time doing this. And personally, I, one foot, I don't think makes a difference one way or the other. And if they feel this is, uh, better for our residents, then, then I'm, I'm, I'm good with it.
Question. That, uh, five-foot hedge will also be allowed on the side all the way to the first setback?
To the front wall of the house.
To the front, okay, to the front wall of the house, right? Or, or setback, right?
Or setback, whatever.
Or setback, okay. All right, okay. So, so it, it will not only be in the front...
It'll be on the side.
But it will go on the side all the way to...
The wall of the house.
To the, to the first setback.
There's only a one-foot difference than what, one-foot difference than what we allow now. I don't think that's...
And then, and then in the back...
Is eight.
In, in the back will be eight.
I'm fine with that.
And you are, you wanna continue on the side of the house just so we understand it at six feet, correct?
No.
No, that's not...
Eight feet?
Everything from the, the front wall of the house back is allowed to go eight. What was discussed?
The front is five.
Which, which will give the residents...
The privacy that you, that you were looking for.
Some will wanna do it. I mean, I, I know, I know a lot of them that will do it because they have pools and, and, you know, they want privacy. You know, our lots are not that, that big, so, uh, this will offer them the choice, again, choice. You, we give them the choice to have an eight-foot tall, uh, uh, hedge or a six-foot tall or a five-foot tall.
What do we allow in the back right now?
Six.
Six, you did say that. Okay, so I think this is, this is fair. Again, we give them the choice.
And again, materials.
Okay, now we're, now we're switching to fences, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Suarez, we're switching to fences now. Now we're finished with hedges, now we're going to the fence portion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Now, we're talking about the height. Uh, we also inserted in the, uh, ordinance an arc of visibility in the corners and approaches to, uh, driveways.
Correct.
I want you to be aware of that.
Oh, yes, sir.
Corner lots, yeah. They, they're, they're gonna be restricted because, you know, it will cause a safety issue if, if, uh, you know, they have the hedge.
And driveway purchase. So if you have a hedge in your front, it needs to be...
It has to be inserted to the back in order to have an arc of visibility.
Okay. Juan, perfect. Thank you for bringing that, that point out, uh, Mr. Attorney. Okay, so moving on to...
Materials.
Fencing, yes.
As far as fencing materials, what was Mr. Riallo was finally, uh, brought up in language is the permitted fences will be all fences described here and shall be constructed with materials allowed and approved by Miami-Dade County or the state of Florida.
What I meant by that is that you're not limiting anything. As a matter of fact, as Commissioner, uh, Blanis, uh, very specifically stated, you have a choice of, uh, all of the gamma of, uh, approved, uh, materials that are allowed in the state of Florida and specifically Miami-Dade County. In other words, it has to go out to product control and product control will determine what's good, uh, for the county and, uh, to be resistant for hurricane purposes. And if not, it cannot be, uh, approved by the city of, uh, West Miami. So that language, I mean, it, it took some time in order to, um, to find the, not the language, but I think that, uh, that, that would be adequate for the purpose of Commissioner Blanis.
So basically, we significantly increased the material that would be allowed for fencing?
That's correct.
Because we were very, very restrictive.
But that's from the front wall of the house towards the back. The front still stays as galvanized picket, rough iron, or CBS wall with either, either of...
Oh, so this is just the back?
The material that could be used towards the back.
Oh. Did you realize that, Commissioner Blanis?
What did the planning and zoning?
The same thing. They wanted to keep the front away from chain link and any other type of material.
Oh, definitely, yeah. Definitely not chain link.
Correct.
So we didn't, we didn't, it, we didn't add to the...
The front materials remain the same.
Which is CBS?
CBS wall.
Galvanized?
Or precast or CBS, either one.
Right.
Or CBS with rough iron or aluminum picket.
How about the composite?
Yeah, no.
Why not?
No composite material. They didn't...
Because that, that, that's just...
They didn't, they didn't want that in the front yard.
What was the rationale?
The material over time decays.
Stuff, I mean, the, the composite materials that they're using, you know, it'll last longer than, than, than wood?
We went ahead and we bought some, uh, picnic benches and they're already sagging, so. It happens.
Going back to the, uh, uh, the question that had been presented now, then the section B, uh, should be also changed to be permitted fence. All fences described herein shall be constructed of material allowed and approved by Miami-Dade County Products Approval of the State of Florida Product Control as having met all the wind loads, uh, hurricane forces when installed properly in the back of the property only.
Okay. Let, let me ask you something. Other cities allow for these composite materials to be used as fencing in the front of their properties?
Uh, we really didn't look at other cities, but from what I've seen out, I've never seen composites being used up front.
Frank, any?
No, no wood, no composite, most of the city.
Okay, so it, it would just be in the back?
So section B wouldn't be amended then, Commissioner?
I'm sorry?
Section B would be amended, is that correct? Yes, have only in the back.
If, if we go with what the zoning board requests.
Wha, wha, Madam Mayor, you, you were gonna say something?
I wanna, I wanted to show you, um, I mean, for the benefit of, of everybody, this is what composite material looks like. Looks like wood, it's, you know, it's...
I, I just thought all this came about because we had many requests from residents as far as... Looks like a wood.
Our ordinance did not allow for, uh, for the use of composite materials in the back?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
It only allowed for wood or chain link.
Chain link, that was it. Now they're allowed to have these...
PVC fences and everything that's allowed under the county.
But not in the front?
That's correct.
See, I thought this all came about because we had residents requesting, uh, different types of fencing for the front. I didn't think the, the back was ever in question, if my, if my memory serves me.
Well, I, 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 I meant the whole perimeter of the property, but you know what? Uh, I've, you know, our planning and zoning is very diligent.
Mm-hmm.
You know what? They, they, these are people that are, they're very motivated, you know, and they do their homework and when they attend meetings, they, you know, they come full of knowledge, you know, and, and, um, you know, Ms., Mr. Penna just stated that this material will, will decay, will bend, will not be as sturdy as, as, uh, what we allow now in the front. So...
I'm good.
I think, I think it will be, I think it will be prudent to, to, to go along with the advice of the planning and zoning.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
In the back, the wood is accepted?
Yes.
Okay, that, that won't be sure.
Yes.
Many people in the back with the wood and stuff.
So the difference between what we have now and what, what is, what is being proposed is that we now accept everything that the state accepts and Miami-Dade County accepts in the back?
With the product approval, yes.
And, and that's at the first setback, from the first setback?
From the wall back, yes. From the wall back, yes.
We changed nothing about the front. The front is as is, as was.
Correct, except for the height of the hedge.
Except for the hedges.
No, no, I'm talking just fencing, fences, 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 okay?
The height of the fence stays?
The same.
The same, okay. In the front?
Correct.
Okay.
So it's obviously better. We bettered our ordinance, basically, okay?
Yeah.
That's all I can ask for. And, you know, thank you and our planning and zoning for looking at this again for us. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone here to speak on this item, Madam Plurk?
No, Madam Mayor.
Close the hearing. Madam Plurk, will you, did you read the ordinance already?
Yes.
Yes, you did, okay. So I need a motion?
Motion.
On the, with the recommendation by the planning and zoning board on the change in section B to put it back only.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
As amended. I have a motion by Commissioner Blanis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Suarez, add your vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanis.
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
4-0, item passes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 11B. This is a public hearing, a second reading. An ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida, creating the office of a special master, establishing qualifications of the special master, delegating authority to the special master to review code enforcement fines and liens imposed upon real estate owners and individuals for violations of city ordinances, delegating and authorizing the special master to mitigate fines imposed by the code enforcement board for violations of city ordinance upon compliance and corrections of violations of the code, delegating and authorizing the special master to mitigate and release liens filed against real estate properties for violations of city codes upon compliance and correction of violations of the code, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, providing for ineffectivity.
May I be heard, Madam?
Absolutely, and I want to thank you, Mr. Attorney, for the great work you've done on all these, on all these ordinances.
Well, I have certain suggestions on my own ordinance, the one that I created. On page two of four, if you go out to section three.
Mm-hmm.
I have two recommendations. Number one, section three says special master shall have the power to, it says adopt rules for conduct of its hearing. Number one, I think that it should not be its hearing, but it should be the hearing. But I think that the rules should be adopted by the administration, brought out to the commission for the commission approval, and not the hearing master, because after all, he's an appointed person. And then on number six, I'm sorry?
No, I agree with you.
Okay, and number six, compromise and settle fines and penalties concurrent with the city manager. I would like to change the concurrent to the city manager and leave it exclusively to the special master.
As it should be, I agree.
Okay. And the other one on section four, appointment of a special master upon the recommendation of city manager, city commission shall by majority rule appoint the designated person for this particular position who shall have the authority to the whole hearings of hold and mitigate fines. Right there, liens, etc., right there, I think that somehow we need to establish a percentage which will be applicable to everybody. Because, see, we have homes, Mr. Penna, correct me if I'm wrong, that for minor violations, because they have not complied with it throughout the years, they have reached to sums which are not reasonable. For instance, I remember one particular fine and lien that is up to $90,000, is that correct, Mr. Penna?
Yes.
If you try to mitigate that lien before court of law, I don't think that the court will look with, will frown upon such a high fine or lien. So I think that the percentage of mitigation has to be somehow defined at some point. So again, together with administrative rules, I would suggest that you allow the city manager, myself, to, number one, correct the administrative rules, and number two, establish some sort of fine limitations to allow the general master to comply. And in addition to that, I have created a form, which I think everybody has, that City of West Miami Administrative Hearing Request Form Mitigation for City of West Miami. You all have this?
I saw it, it's not in the package, but I do have it in email.
No, the reason why you don't have it is because we had put in an administrative fee for the applicant, and that has not been changed. I think you had a concern with that section of the form.
Well, that would be my other issue. I have conducted an extensive research on other managers, and I'm sorry, other special masters, as far as section eight, the compensation of the masters. And I had left at some point, the compensation of special master should be compensated at a rate of no exceed two, and I had left a blank. But the general consensus would be that no general master will work out for less than $150 an hour, and for no less than guaranteed two hours.
Yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
I want to go back to where we originally decided to do this.
Mm-hmm.
What was the reasoning or the rationale that we thought that this would be a better way to do this?
If my recollection serves me, it was to take politics out of it, and that we, that many of us felt uncomfortable in having the resident come before us and us making the decision, that it should be administrative.
Thank you.
If my memory serves me correct.
Yeah, thank you. I'm recollection of it now, yeah.
I mean, we are legislative, not administrative, and this is pretty much an administrative.
When you take it out, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize. When you take it out from you, like you have done throughout the years, to a general master, that will not be administrative, that will be quasi judicial.
Well, I mean, taking it away from the table, taking politics out of it.
And this is how you do planning and zoning. Just the same thing. I mean, it comes out, the suggestion from?
No, no, code enforcement.
The same thing as planning and zoning. Planning and zoning decides something, and then it comes to you as an appeal. So in this particular case, it goes out to the code enforcement board and comes to you as an appeal. So it's the same thing. One way or the other, it's, you're taking out yourself as like quasi judicial, and you have to bye-bye Jennings and keep yourself out of the fray by not talking to each other. But it's the same thing. It's the same quasi judicial form and the code enforcement as you do in the planning and zoning.
This is just a?
It's not administrative.
It's a much cleaner way for it to be handled.
You know, I've been giving this some thought. And, you know, the good thing about doing this is that it's out of our hands. And on the negative side, the bad thing is that it's out of our hands. And, you know, considering that we're such a small city, we're not a large city, you know, we don't have that many gears and, 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 and different levels of dealing with these kinds of situations, you know, like the city of Miami would, that has hundreds of thousands of residences and thousands of cases. But we don't, we don't, you know, we have maybe, you know, several, you know, in a quarter. And most of the time, we've asked our administration, our city manager and our public works director, which is the code enforcement director, you know, what it is that would be a fair, you know, percentage of the fine. And most of the times, they say five, they say 10, you know, and we at times have been able to even increase it because we have an individual in front of us that doesn't live there, you know, that has a corporation, an LLC, and he rents it, and it's a, you know, investment property, and he really doesn't care. All he's concerned with is, is just, you know, having that rent money be deposited in his bank account. So, you know, the rest of the neighborhood, the rest of the residences suffer for that. So, and then, and then you have cases, like I recall one case where a lady that was here had some issue with her, I think, significant other, and, and I think, you know, she was, you know, physically abused, and, I mean, it was kind of dramatic. And I remember, I think, I think it was me, I think that, you know, I helped her. I said something and I did something that really helped her. And she started crying. And then she gave me a bottle of whiskey. I didn't want to accept it, but, and I think I gave it to Commissioner Suarez because I didn't like that whiskey.
I have something to say when you finish.
Okay, then. Moving right along?
Well, if you accept a bottle of whiskey, you have to report it.
I was hoping you were gonna say that. Okay, go ahead.
I think I did.
Okay, go ahead. Let's continue.
As a matter of fact, I did.
Thank you, continue.
But anyway, my point is that, you know, we're adding another gear, you know, to our little city, you know, to, you know, we're gonna have to have someone come in, we don't know who, we're gonna have to pay them. Who pays them? The resident pays, you know? I mean, what if it's another lady like that, you know, that doesn't have the money, you know, and we tell her, oh, yeah, you're gonna have to pay 300 bucks right off the back.
Well, no, it would be $450.
Oh, $450.
Because, as I say, the application, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but the application will be $150 just to apply.
Okay. Right, $450, three?
So if it takes two hours, it's $150.
$300 minimum. And so, so, you know, not long ago, we had a case here where we had a resident, actually a neighbor of mine, that there was some issue with a property, and he wasn't advised, he didn't know, and time went by, and he owed, you know, a lot of money. And it was something insignificant. It was something that did not take away from the quality of life, you know, of his neighbors. And, and, and you know what? And it came to us, and I believe you, Madam Mayor, you know, you said, you know what? This isn't fair. And you know what? We, you know, we were, we decided, you know, that, you know, that is right. They had a good point, and it was just and fair that they did not have to pay anything. And that's exactly what happened. So, like I say, the good thing about this is that it's out of our hands. And the bad thing about this is that it's out of our hands.
May I?
That's the point that I'm trying to make.
Kind of a double-edged sword, right?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
However, it's just a step. Remember, anybody that gets adjudicated by the special master or the code enforcement board, if they want to appeal it, they could always come to the city commission before having to go to circuit court. However, you also have to remember the period of time when COVID was rampant, where we couldn't meet, and people wanted to get their business done, and code enforcement boards were not meeting. So having a special master ordinance as an alternative to something that we can't meet for some other reason, whatever comes in future, it's nice to have that ace there sitting for a use someday that only the board can't meet and the special master as one person can.
Question. Mr. Attorney, can we do that?
We can do that. The only, the only issue is this, I mean, if you have?
Can that be like a second string?
You could have a duplicate alternative, yes. But the problem is that if you do have that, it will be very hard to find a lawyer that will be willing to be on call or on call at some specific point. Because, you see, this is being a small city, then the mitigations would be whenever the code enforcement board cannot meet, or whenever it might come out to the, to the commission. So Mr. Penna is correct in saying that we can have both. But the thing is that the question is, is it practical to have both? And the issue is, where are you gonna find a lawyer that is gonna be on call?
Creating different levels of bureaucracy and then?
Well, like Mr. Penna said, you know, in unforeseen circumstances like COVID, you know, that totally turned our world upside down, then, you know, by all means, that would have been a really good tool to have in the toolbag. And we did not have that.
No.
So, and that was a left, and that was a curve you threw there, Mr. Attorney, about the, about the, and trying to find an attorney. But you know what? I think that maybe we should proceed that way and have that as something that we can, and you know what? And if we ever have a situation like that, like COVID or World War III?
Please.
You know?
Can you bring that back a notch?
Then you know what? Then we'll deal with it and we'll find someone to, and in the meantime, we proceed as we've been doing.
Yes, 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 yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner's been waiting very patiently.
You finished?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Today, tonight, about this has been remembered, Mr. Eduardo Muñia, that he likes to use the word transparency all the time. Now, in the first, I see the public hearing, second reading, an ordinance of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami, Florida, creating the office of a special master. I don't know, Madame Claire, but I don't think the commission have any interest in creating new office. It may be the mayor or the manager, but I don't think the city commission is creating anything new here. Don't answer me now. Then, according with the I hear, if that person is created, it will be charged $150 per hour. Now, the residents are tired about taxes, about the bureaucrats, and the bureaucrats, and the bureaucracy. And I don't think in 2022, with the COVID, we are going to create a new, a more expensive thing. Because so far, when there is a mitigation or fine situation, our residents, there are about 7,000, 8,000 residents in the city, whatever problem is, they come to the commission with transparency, like Muñia said. They speak open. Everybody see the discussion in the cameras, the TV system. They may bring people against or pro the situation. Now, everybody give the opinion. We have four commissioners and a mayor, and there is more open transparency for the problem. And there are five opinions free, because we only make $100 a month. Since 1947, this city was created. We don't have any extra $150 per hour for those things. So for free, we solve the problem. We don't need a new master charging $150 per hour for those cases. And it's different when the people come here at the podium, and they talk to the cameras, and all, everybody in the city knows the problem and knows our opinions. That if one master with that person get together, and one person, whatever is the master, maybe he come from the, have many titles, but it's not important the title, the diploma they have. Either one person will take care of the problem. And then we are five. So I think we should keep, like we are now, five opinions. The people come to the front, to the podium, everybody in the city knows what happened, and is very transparent, very clear. It's for free. We don't have to charge any other extra thing. So the creation of these bureaucrats, for me, is something absurd. We don't need that. How many cases we have here in mitigation and fines? Not too many. We don't need to pay a new person here, a bureaucrat new. Do you like more taxes? Do you like more bureaucrats in the government, mayor? I don't like more bureaucrats and more taxes. And I don't think the residents would like to know about this. It's another bureaucrat here charging $100, $150 per hour. We do that for free and very transparency. Everybody see the problem. Everybody hear our opinions, and everybody see the solution. And that's has been done, and it's working, and I think that's the way it should be. Do not create another bureaucrats. Do not create more government. That's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You know, I do recollect some things I said possibly during that meeting where we decided that we would want to have this.
So, we were right. We do remember. We did discuss this, all of us discussed this before, right?
We sure did.
Just wanted to be sure I was remembering correctly.
And my reasoning was that I felt uncomfortable. I really did feel uncomfortable, you know? And, you know, I thought to myself, well, why should I do this? You know, it makes me feel uncomfortable. And, and, and you know what? And if I have to do it in the future, it'll probably make me feel uncomfortable. But you know what? We chose to sit here. This is not a real comfortable position. And through the years, sitting here, you know, I mean, I was a fireman, you know, I was a fireman for 33 years. I thought I had thick skin. You know, because when you live with other firemen, boy, they sure as hell, you know, get you to get thick skin. But you know what? But here, I even grew thicker skin, you know, thanks to our administration and my colleagues and the public.
Glad we were able to help.
And, and you know, you know what? You know what? That's why I sit here. I have to take it. I have to deal with it. And as I said earlier, we're a small city. We're not a large city. We get maybe several of these situations in every three months, in a quarter. And, you know, most of the time, we listen to Mr. Penna, and we listen to our manager, you know, and we hear the particulars of the case, and we do take each case individually. And like I say, three cases come to mind. The lady that cried, gave me the bottle of whiskey. The other?
That you reported for the record?
That I reported. The other, my neighbor that had a property that he had no clue, no idea. And I think there was an issue with a code enforcement officer at the time that something was done not right, and that's why he was under that situation. And we saw it immediately, and immediately we, you know, we proceeded the way, you know, the right and just way. And then, and then we had one individual here one day, you know, where he, it was an LLC. He owned properties all around. He had a property here, it was a rental property, it was an investment property. He really didn't care about it. And, you know, and I remember that, you know?
I was here.
The city manager stating, you know what? We've really worked hard on this case, you know, they have not? You know, they have not been compliant. They have not responded, you know? And, and, and they recommended, you know, a, a high percentage, you know, to, to, to cover all our, our, our costs. And, and I believe that we agreed and that we voted on it and, 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 and it was done. So, like I say, if we do this, and I, and, and actually, I think we should, and we should have it there in the toolbox. You know, and we have it in case something unforeseen happens where we can put it to use. But if not, we just leave it alone. We just leave it there and, and proceed the way that we've been proceeding.
I do not think the attorney, well, I have to open the public hearing too. Commissioner, I do not, I think the attorney said we could not have both, if I'm correct.
No, no. He just said that we couldn't find an attorney.
We could have both. The problem is that the court enforcement board does not meet. To have a, an attorney on call is very difficult.
Okay, so what you're saying is we could have this on the books as an emergen, in, in the case of an emergency?
You're not going to find a lawyer, lawyer, you need a certain qualification.
So it's a no. It's a no to have this-
First of, first of all, you need a certain qualification.
Okay, okay.
Not, not just anybody. Okay?
Okay.
So I, I, I think that Commissioner Suarez and Commissioner Blanis are totally correct, as were you. Because you, we're talking about taking it out of politics. But as Commissioner Suarez and Commissioner Blanis are saying, that this is a very small community. And when you take it out to someone that does not live here and does not know the, the issues in the city, you take away from yourself to be responsive to your people that live in the city.
Okay. Thank you all for your very eloquent input on this. Commissioner Suarez, thank you. Commissioner Blanis, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing at this point. Public hearing open. Anyone here to speak on this item? Hearing none. Public hearing has closed. If there is no motion, this dies. I want to be sure everyone understands that. Okay? We've already read the ordinance, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Do I have a motion? Hearing none. Item dies.
Yeah, I just want to put something on the record, Madam Mayor. The manager does not tell me to create an ordinance. And the clerk does not tell me to create an ordinance, nor the, Mr. Penna tells me. I respond to the City Commission. By the way, this is the second time that I do this ordinance. The first one was some time back where the commission instructed me to have the manager be the special master, which I created and came out to you and you all turned it down. But as I say, I do not create an ordinance unless directed by either the mayor or the commission. So this was suggested or requested by one of you, so this is why I put it here. Okay?
Yes, sir. And we did discuss this at length at the table, and I, I, I do, I realize that, but-
And you, you had a lot of questions to me personally, which I responded. And I did a lot of research about this.
You did.
I just, I just want to, to put that on the record. The manager does not tell me to create this ordinance.
Understood, sir. And like I said, I, I know we discussed it at the table and everyone had input, and that's why we proceeded with you for the res, for the resolution. But as, as, as we sit here, we are all entitled to have a change of heart, and I respect that. I thank you for the work you put into it, but it, it appears there has been a change of heart and the-
You know what? Like Commissioner Blanis says, you know what again? All of you are correct.
Exactly. That's why we sit up here.
I'll take you out to lunch. That way, you know, make up for it a little bit.
And I'll report that.
And you don't have to report that. It's okay.
For, for the record.
For the record.
The mitigation will continue to come to the mayor and City Commission.
As it is today. That is correct. Okay. Next item.
Item 11C. This is a public hearing, a second reading. In ordinance of the mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami repealing Section 133, amending Section 135 of the Code of Ordinance of the City of West Miami prohibiting the display of mannequins, merchandise wares, equipment, or any goods for sale outside of the premises of a licensed business or structure, providing for fines and/or penalties for noncompliance, providing for conflict correction, providing for severability, providing for transmittal, and providing for an effective date. And this public hearing was authorized, Madam Mayor.
I'm going to change this up a little bit. I'm going to open the public hearing first. Public hearing is open. Anyone here to speak on this? Public hearing is now closed. And point of privilege, there is a bill going through the legislature right now that will, will have a great effect on this ordinance. So I am going to respectfully ask that we defer this until a much later time, until, especially until after legislative session. Because there's, I believe there's two bills, a bill in the House and a bill in the Senate that will have a, a big impact on this. So I don't want to do anything until we just, we see what the, what the legislature decides. Okay? So, Madam Clerk?
Okay, this is a public hearing that you opened. We closed it, so we can bring this back at any time.
Exactly. That is correct.
Continuing the public hearing. I think, I think you should, I, I don't know, but I think we would need a-
Continue the public hearing or how would, how would we handle this?
I would do a, a motion to defer it indefinitely, and if it does come back at a later time, you go through the process of your public hearing notices again.
Okay, I need a motion.
As a matter of fact, let me go further to what the mayor says, that there is a bill entitled, be a bill entitled. It hasn't been entitled yet, but it's amending chapter 125.66 of Florida statute that, that would provide for civil action filed against local governments. Okay?
Yes, sir.
So that will be something that would-
That's exactly the bill I'm referring to.
Perhaps be in the books to come and hunt us.
That's exactly the bill that I'm referring to. So I need a motion to defer this.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the-
Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
For zero, item passes.
Thank you for-
Deferring it indefinitely.
Yes, until we see what those, what those bills do. Exactly. Exactly. Okay. Next item.
Item D. A request for resolution referenced to proposal for engineering services for City of West Miami water main improvement project Phase 1B and recommendation to fund said project in part by State of Florida DEP, City of West Miami match. This is by Francisco Alonso, AMI Engineering LLC.
Welcome back to the podium, sir.
Good evening. Once again, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I'll talk briefly about the three items that are coming up. As we've discussed before, presented in my previous report, was an outline of the three, the two water main phases that we have coming up now that we, that we have funded. Phase 1B would be the, essentially, essentially the extension of what's being constructed right now.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, but you have to refer to each resolution individually.
That's fine. Well, then I'll discuss each one. So let's discuss the item D, Phase 1B. As I said, that's the extension of Phase 1, which will be essentially 59th Avenue from 16th Street up to 9th Street. We'll have a new main extending through that area there. The proposal you have before you is to complete the design permitting and construction oversight of the project, so from, from beginning to end. And, and as, as I said before, we've, we've presented this project previously, a water main replacement, connection to the service easements, and essentially an extension of what we're finishing up now.
Partially funded by a grant and a match from the PTP surtax funds for a total project amount of $600,000.
By the way, you have to, first of all, we have, in this particular case, you have an issue to waive the procurement requirements authorized by our charter.
We're only talking about, this is just the, the request for resolution. We're on D right now, correct? We haven't proceeded to actually reading these resolutions. So we're only talking about item D. Okay.
So that you are made aware of what the resolution contemplates.
Okay.
It's not only the engineering fees, it's the waiving of the purchasing requirements for the reasons that are going to be set forth in the resolution and putting into the record the budget for the project for Phase 1B.
As I was advised, the City Commission, the, from the managers, the City Commission finds, and that will be 1, 2, 3, 4 were assets, that the procurement requirement should be waived due to the fact that the AMI Engineering has done the, all the preliminary studies to include citywide models of the portable water system funded by the State of Florida. And is fully familiar with the portable needs of the City of West Miami to include engineering, construction, et cetera. And this is the reason why the management suggests that the procurement process should be waived in this particular instance.
I don't think there's anybody out there, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Commission, any other engineering firm that is ready, would be ready to go if, if we went through the procurement process and knows the system the way that Mr. Alonso knows. He's been overseeing these projects for the last 20 years, I believe. And so I think that he's the best, the most suitable engineering candidate for, for the continuation of the project as, as quickly as possible because of the grants. And obviously, we want to move forward. We need to continue to show the state that we are serious about using, utilizing the money that they have given the city wisely in a matter of, you know, each project maybe lasting a year to 18 months maximum.
Thank you. Yes.
Because everything that you've said just now, it makes it a special situation. And seeing the outcome of the development of, of Phase 1, you know, there's, we shouldn't even be talking about this because, but we have to.
We have to.
The fact that, you know, he's been here for 20 years and he knows exactly, exactly where he's going to take up again from this other project that we just finished, you know, we'd be really foolish to consider, you know, another engineering firm. I personally, you know, if it was my house, I, I wouldn't even think of it. And the other comment is that, to our residents, that this is being totally funded by a grant and PTP taxes that we get from Miami-Dade County.
Correct.
If you can elaborate a little bit better about the funding.
Of course. The, the grant money is from the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the second year funding as a result of your effort in Tallahassee lobbying for the money for the city. The second part is money that is allocated to the City of West Miami as part of our transportation, 80%. This is the result of the People's Transportation Plan, which is a referendum that passed many years ago by the voters of Miami-Dade County. And what our city receives is a prorata portion of all the tax money collected by the Office of the CITT, which handles the half-cent penny tax. I believe the date of the election on that was in 2002, and from there, it generated all the projects under the GOB funds and everything that would be covered by the half-cent penny tax. So basically, what we're doing is we're putting the money that we receive from the PTP and the surtax, which is the same thing, they're two in one, and we're putting it back into projects for the benefit of the community. If we were to tax residents for a project of this nature, you would be talking a lot of money. So far, there has been zero cost to the taxpayer.
Resident of West Miami.
Correct.
Which is a testament to the hard work that this table has, has put in. So I greatly appreciate that. Okay. Madam Clerk, can you read the resolution, please? Can you read E?
Item 11E. A resolution of the mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami waiving purchasing requirements pursuant to Chapter 2, Article 4, Section 274B of the Code of Ordinance of the City of West Miami accepting the recommendation of the city manager to waive procurement requirements, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the AMI Engineering as described in correspondence dated November 15, 2021, with attachment, attachment of scope of work included herein as Exhibit A for replacement of the portable water main improvement project Phase 1B for a total lump sum of $74,480 to be funded from a grant in the amount of $350,000 funded by the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, leveraged by the City of West Miami PTP reserved in the amount of $250,000 for a total budget amount of $600,000 labeled City of West Miami Phase 1B Portable Water Main Improvement Project, providing for effective date.
I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Commissioner Blanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
For zero, item passes.
When you're ready, can you read item F, please?
Item 11F. Request for resolution in reference to proposal for engineering services for the City of West Miami Water Main Improvement Project Phase 2 and recommendation to fund said services for American Rescue and Recovery Project with no match requirement. Francisco Alonso, AMI Engineering LLC.
All right, so Phase 2, as we've discussed before, this is, this is the big one that we have now. So this project will essentially take us from 59th Avenue all the way to 65th Avenue. For the most part, there may be some pockets left on the west side of the city, but we'll essentially build out everything on north of 16th Street with this phase. Modernize all the pipes. Everything's going to be new, new services. And, and this is, this is a major project. This is a major undertaking. This one will probably take, this one will probably take a little longer. We're probably looking at a, you know, two-year project here from start to finish. But it, it, it will be a, a complete overhaul of the system north of 16th Street and will be completing essentially two-thirds of the master plan with this project. So it's, it's exciting and definitely, we're going to make a huge dent in those leakage numbers. They should significantly go down.
Finally.
Yeah.
Major infrastructure development that we are going to be able to-
And of course, as part of these projects, we, you know, new streets, milling and resurfacing all the streets. So it's, it's, you know, it's going to basically transform the, the north side of the city, modernize everything, bring everything up to, to time.
This is your legacy, I got to tell you. This is the one you're going to, that goes down on the books under your watch. We're going to give people an opportunity to have a potable water system that is new and it may last another 80 years before, before, before a future commission has to deal with that.
Well, you know, we, we, recently, we've, we've had so many young families, you know, that have moved into the city and, you know, they're having babies, you know, they're, you know, and they're everywhere and, you know, and, and these young families are putting in a lot of money into their homes.
Absolutely.
I, I saw a home, I think it's 14th Street. It's sort of like, you know, kind of boxy, but it, it, it looks great.
Oh, yes.
It looks fantastic, you know, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, you know, that was quite an investment. So, you know, to, you know, it's like having a Ferrari and no tires, you know, if, if, if you don't have a really good infrastructure system like potable water. I mean, a house with no water. I mean, that, so, so, you know, it, it goes without saying. I, I, I think that, you know, in the history of the city, you know, there's never been a project, you know, as large as this. And, and it's, it's been needed. It's something that we needed to get done. And we talked about it so many times. And Commissioner Suarez, you know, has gone to Tallahassee, you know, so many times and has fought with his people up there and argue and, and, you know, he's, he's, he's been, you know, a champion, you know, for this cause. You know, so, and, and, you know, we've all been very concerned with it, you know. So I'm incredibly, you know, thankful that we're able to do, and we're going to have such a, a, a great engineering firm looking after this and, and getting this done.
And, and I've said it before and, oh, maybe wax poetic here a little bit, but in the 20 years of my professional career, I've worked for other cities and I haven't, what you, what this city has been able to do in 20 years, basically tackling, it's like every infrastructure problem that we've had, we've tackled it, we've planned it, we funded it, we built it next.
Mayor, may I?
Mayor, may I?
So it's been, it's been a pleasure to be a part of it.
Well, let's let him finish.
From the drainage projects, the pump stations, you know, we had a city that, you know, people, people didn't want to live here because they flooded. And that's not the case anymore. And we had traffic, you know, we had traffic issues. We had a traffic coming master plan. We planned it, we funded it, we built it. And now with the water, being able to do the same thing, it's been a real pleasure.
Sidewalks.
And this water is just a kudos to this table. You know, we worked together, we worked hard, and, and we were able to make it happen. And Commissioner Blanes, as you were saying, those, those younger residents you see strolling their babies, every time I see them, and I see, I see many, 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 I think that was, that was me 35 years ago.
Yeah, we were there.
And what, what I paid for my house back then was a lot 35 years ago, comparative to what, you know, yes, houses now cost a lot, but for me back then, what we paid was a lot. So, and, you know, we bought it with, you know, the broken pipes and the city, you know, which needed much, a lot of improvements, and so I just, I just see them, and that was, that was me 35 years ago. So I'm happy to still be here and now sitting here and being able to do such great things for our city. Yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to add something, that today, the Commissioner, District 6, County Commissioner Rebecca Sosa, she's in Tallahassee since yesterday. And today, she was working for us with water progress, I mean, the programs, and she was working very hard. In the, in the, in the agenda she had was West Miami. And I know she did a good meetings today there for us, trying to get more money for the water that we need.
You mean Captain Sosa? Because she was out there on a boat, wearing boots, I think with the governor of Florida currently, and she was out there, you know, at that time.
I still have those pictures.
Yeah, you still, so, yeah.
Jeb Bush.
She, she, she started it all.
Actually, you have the negatives.
Jeb Bush.
No iPhones back then, right? But, yeah, they, they were out there in about waist-deep water, you know, and she dragged the governor out there at the time, I think it was Bush?
Jeb Bush.
Jeb Bush, and, and we were able to, at least that west side of the city, to, to get it to where it finally drained and the water would run off and-
It was in the ride with Felix, Felix, his jeep, Rebecca, Felix, and the governor in his jeep, in the Felix jeep. And they were, they were around the city, and they went to the deepest area. And when Jeb Bush got out from the jeep, I was in front there. He told me, "I wet my bottom." It was all wet. I wet, I wet, I wet my bottom.
Okay, where are we? Did we read G? No, we haven't-
G is the resolution that we have to-
We haven't read G yet. Okay, so-
Long resolution, like heading.
All right, so let's go ahead and read item G.
Okay, item G. A resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami waiving purchasing requirements pursuant to chapter 2, article, article 4, section 274B of the Code of Ordinance of the city of West Miami, accepting the recommendation of the city manager to waive procurement requirements, authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with AMI Engineering as described in exhibit A for replacement of the portable water improvement project Phase 2 for a total lump sum in the amount of $391,020 to be funded from the American Rescue Recovery Program from the continuation of the water main improvement project as described by the engineering proposal submitted by AMI Engineering, incorporating the scope of the work for the engineering services as described on the exhibit A, providing for exhibits labeled city of West Miami as Phase 2 portable water main improvements project, providing for effective date.
Motion.
Second.
Just want to clarify that again, you know, the taxpayers, residents of city of West Miami are not paying, you know, for this project. It's all, it's all being funded by a grant.
100% funded by the American Rescue and Recovery Project.
Yes, sir, thank you.
100%.
You have the motion and second. Clerk?
Call the vote, please.
I was waiting for the mayor.
Thank you. Yes, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
For zero, item passes.
Thank you. Item H?
Next item. Item H. Request for resolution in reference to proposal for engineering services for the city of West Miami drainage improvement project, and recommendation to fund said services from the surtax PTP reserves, city manager, director of public works, Francisco Alonso, AMI Engineering LLC.
All right, so this particular project, this is kind of some past due housekeeping that we've, some couple matters, some spot drainage issues that we've had to address over the past couple years. So we're finally gonna be able to get it done. One of the streets is 66th Avenue, where we had some recent developments along that avenue. And we had some kind of delayed drainage improvements that we had to do there. We were waiting for that development to finish. There finished, there's a few townhomes that were built there. So part of this is for the design permitting and construction of 66th Avenue. We'll build out that street to a proper typical section. If you actually go out there at 66th, north of 15th, right? North of 15th, it's, it's a mess. I mean, it's, that street's always kind of been a mess. And so we're gonna put in a proper typical section for the road, new drainage connected to the pump station system, and basically just bring that, that road up to, up to par with the rest of the neighborhood. The other issue that we're gonna address is over on 16th Terrace, over here west of 62nd here. There's a little spot drainage issue that we have there that's been lingering, that's under, it's just kind of a dip in the road that's been underserved. So we're going to do some drainage improvements there, connect it back to the main system over on 62nd. So just kind of a couple little spot issues that we have to take care of.
Thank you, Frankie. Could you read item I, please, Madam Clerk?
Item I. A resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami waiving purchasing requirements pursuant to chapter 2, article 4, section 274B of the Code of Ordinance of the city of West Miami, accepting the recommendation of the city manager to waive procurement requirements, authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with AMI Engineering for the 2022 drainage improvement project to be funded from the PTP surtax reserves as submitted by AMI Engineering marked exhibit A to include the scope of work for engineering services, providing for effective date.
And again, this, this also falls under the same category. It's being paid for by the surtax, so that's no extra cost to the residents of West Miami.
Motion. Second.
Call the vote.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
For zero, item passes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'd like to defer item 12 until the next meeting.
Do we know it? Are all in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good of the order? Anyone for good of the order?
Item 13, good of the order.
Okay, hearing none. Any a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.